To services and on behalf of the Calhoun Parish Police Jury, I welcome you along with the Project No Coalition. To start our town meeting off tonight, I would ask that Ms. Mary Kay Alamon lead us in the invocation.
Please bow your heads. Lord, we ask that you bless this meeting and the people attending today. Lord, please bless our elected officials with wisdom to guide our parish, state, and our nation. Bless the parents in our community with the wisdom to guide their children, patience to teach them, and vigilance to remember that they are the strongest influence. Lord, most of all, bless our children, the future of our community. Thank you for being our source of guidance today and every day. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Alamon. I'd ask this time to miss that we all stand and Ashley Thibodeau lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ashley. It's a great evening. Again, I welcome you. I'm going to be turning it over to, which I say is the best moderator in the state, Mr. Jason Barnes. But before I do that, I just want to let you know that I don't know if you'll find a program that has made such a big impact in such a short time span. I think there has been a lot of programs that are worth the cause, but I can tell you right now, as you'll see tonight, that the impact that it's made in the short several months is tremendous. On that note, it's a lot of hard work to make that impact. The Project No Coalition works many weekends, nights, local law enforcement agencies has put forth numerous hours, which you will see later on, so we're very proud and we thank them for the support. And also at this time, I'd like to thank Mary Kay Alamon, who is the Project No Director. Numerous hours that she's put in for the families of Calhoun Parish, and we appreciate all the hard work. Okay, so it's time to start the town hall meeting, and at this time, I turn over to Jason Barnes, who will be the moderator tonight. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. My name is Jason Barnes. I'm with the police jury, and I do special programs and cultural affairs for the police jury, but tonight, I have the wonderful opportunity of moderating this wonderful panel of experts. Project No is something that I've had the wonderful pleasure of being able to be involved with and supporting Mary Kay and the team who is making this program a possibility into the community of Calhoun Parish. And we get to hear tonight from a panel of experts. Some will share their stories, some will share their expertise, and what we hope that you take from this town hall meeting tonight is something that you can take to heart and remember for time to come to make sure that the people that you know who might be the teenagers and the youth of our area may learn some very important lessons here from this town hall meeting tonight. So we're going to start it right off with the project director, Ms. Mary Kay Alamon, who is, as Dane said, a wonderful asset to the police jury and is doing a great job here with Project No.
Thank you, Jason. First of all, I wanted to just say what the purpose of the grant is for. We're here to let the public know and give knowledge about the dangers, risks, and consequences of underage drinking, as well as enforce our current laws, parish ordinances, and city ordinances related to alcohol. The parish received this grant because we do have a problem. In the surveys done in our parish schools right here in Calhoun Parish, children answered that they are starting to drink as early as 11 years old. And, you know, when I first started this job, I didn't realize the health risk that alcohol could have on children. And I was like most of the parents, you know, in the parish today. They think it's a rite of passage, they, you know, they, "Well, they're going to do it anyway," but it's not. It's endangering our youth, it's endangering their brain, it's a health risk to their brains and their health overall. So, I'm sorry. Research has shown that youths who drink before the age of 15 are four out of five times more likely to develop a dependence on alcohol. It's also shown that they are more prone to become alcoholics. If they start, the younger they start drinking, the more chance they have to become alcoholic. So, we are responsible for keeping our kids safe and healthy, and I hope that everyone will visit our website and see and gain the knowledge that they need to give their children so they won't drink and provide alcohol to their children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Kay. Just before we move on, I failed to mention earlier, the way we're going to do this town hall meeting is we're going to hear from all the panelists, hear what they have to say about a certain topic of the program, and then we're going to open it up for questions to the public here tonight at the very end. So we're going to continue to move on to Commander James McGee, who is with the Calhoun Parish Sheriff's Office. He's been with the sheriff's office for 19 years. He's a commander there, and he is the project manager for our party patrols, which he's going to talk more about, including enforcement with this program.
Thank you, Jason. I'm going to start off with some numbers of some of our stats that we've had throughout the three months that we've done this. We have worked 2,729 hours under this grant. We have issued 30 summonses, misdemeanor summonses, to underage persons. We have issued 31 summonses to adults, for a total of 106 summonses we've written. We wrote 45 summonses to persons over the age of, over the age of 18, sorry, 30 was under the age of 18, for a total of 106. We've done 154 field interview cards, and I will explain those in a second. We have contacted 102 parents. We have responded to 40 locations or residences, and we have patrolled and made contacts at 263 parks throughout the parish. Let me explain a few things that we've come, actually, we're very excited with the progress that we've made. What we're more excited about is that we feel like we've, we were very nervous at first when we started this, how we would be received, especially by parents, and I will say that parents have been more than understanding, more than concerned, a lot more than what we felt like. We felt like it was more acceptable than what we're finding out that it is. Parents that we're contacting are very concerned. They are, we feel like they are taking the steps at home, because we can only, you know, all of us can only do so much. We can issue the summonses, prosecutors can only do so much, but we feel like the parents are really taking it serious, and that's what has excited us the most, is the way that we're being received by them. To touch on a field interview card, anybody that we come into contact with, if we make a stop and we have somebody that wasn't drinking, we're still writing their information down that we've come into contact with them. If we have somebody that we did find that they're drinking and the deputy, under his discretion, decided not to cite them but to call a parent, we're still doing the field interview card, which they're going into a database that all the deputies that are working this detail are issued this list every single night when we start, and they know who we have been in contact with and who we have dealt with previously. So that has been a big help, too, because unfortunately, we have had, on very few occasions, had to deal with the same person more than once. But like I said, we are very excited about it. We feel like everything is going better than planned.
Thank you, James McGee. Yeah, we do a wonderful, the sheriff's office does a wonderful service, along with many of the municipalities that are also involved with the party patrols. Several in this parish have also joined the efforts of the sheriff's office in helping us track down and enforce the laws, which is something we're about to get a little bit more in tune with, with our next presenter. It's Stephanie Cochran, who is an Assistant District Attorney at the Calhoun Parish District Attorney's Office, and she works in the juvenile division. And, you know, there's a lot of legal information tied to the state laws of underage drinking, and so Ms. Cochran's going to explain a little bit more about those issues.
Thank you. Good evening. Glad to be here. As Mr. Barnes has said, I'm assigned to the juvenile division, and it's somewhat appropriate that we're here today on underage drinking. But I did want to clarify from a legal standpoint, juvenile in a legal courtroom is anyone under the age of 17. However, with underage drinking, the laws expose an individual if they're under the age of 21. When you turn 17, you can be prosecuted in adult court. So while we want to say, you know, we're looking at juveniles, there are consequences in the legal system as an adult, and that does carry with you on an extended basis beyond your juvenile years if you were prosecuted in the juvenile system in family and juvenile court. So it has very deep reaches and very significant effects. My office and our district attorney, John DeRozier, we are committed to addressing, because this is a growing national problem. We're not immune here in Calhoun Parish. We know we're not immune, and I think it's great that the Office of Juvenile Justice, the police jury, law enforcement, all these individuals, we've all come together because we recognize we need to do something here, and we're ready to take that position and stand here in Calhoun Parish. It takes a community. I mean, we can all get together, talk, promote ideas, discuss ideas, but the effects can only come into play if we have a community involvement. By that, we mean parents, adults, merchants, retailers, the school system, my office, district attorney's office. Again, it takes all of us together to make a difference. I'd like to read what our mission statement is. That is with this coalition. It's to research, educate, and engage the community on the consequences of alcohol, drugs, and other substance abuse problems among youth and adults while changing social norms in a culturally competent manner and environmental concepts to build a stronger, healthier Calhoun Parish. And that's why we're all here today, because we do stand by that mission, and again, as I indicated, it takes all of us as a community to affect that goal. What I'd like to do as the district attorney's office, we are here to contribute in a way, as Mr. Barnes said, to educate. While we talk about underage drinking as addressed or involving underage individuals, it's not exclusive to juveniles. By that, I mean the laws can reach adults beyond the age of 21. For instance, contributing to delinquency of a juvenile. What that is, is it's a crime. It's against the law to intentionally entice, aid, solicit, or permit anyone over the age of 17 by allowing a child under the age of 17 to engage in certain behavior, such as visiting places where alcohol is sold, violating any laws, whether that's state law or parish ordinances. It is against the law for individuals under the age of 21 to have public possession of alcoholic beverages. It's a crime to drink and drive. It's a crime more specifically for underage drinking and driving. There is a law that addresses specifically individuals under the age of 21. There, and by that, I mean with contributing to delinquency of a juvenile, you may be an adult, but if you allow juveniles and young adults to engage in behavior which is prohibited, you can be charged. It also takes merchants and retail dealers. It's a crime to sell alcohol to persons under the age of 21. Maybe applies to friends or acquaintances, those that aren't parents, spouse, or legal guardians. It's a crime for a person over the age of 21 to purchase alcohol for someone under the age of 21, whether that's a friend or acquaintance, maybe an adult, but not a parent. Those can be held accountable. It's against the law. As I indicated, we have both state statutes, city ordinances, and parish ordinances. Open container laws. It's unlawful for any person to carry open container in public. It's unlawful to drink alcohol in public. It's unlawful to dispense alcohol to minors. Those are parish ordinances. While they may be similar and overlap with the state laws, they are different, and they can be applied in different circumstances. So we, as the district attorney's office, in conjunction with law enforcement, we will prosecute any crime, and that would apply to a number of individuals. I was speaking with Mr. DeRozier this afternoon, and I asked him his thoughts on this, and he said underage drinking is expensive. And by that, I took that to mean expensive, not just if you go to court, but it's expensive for how it affects your life. There's a comment up there that says alcohol is a potent danger for youth. I think that's very appropriate. The consequences can be significant. Not only can you end up in court, criminal court, with all the crimes that I've mentioned, you can have a record. As opposed to a juvenile, it can stick with you as an adult, and it can carry on beyond the time you go to court. There are civil consequences that stem from any violation of these laws. Unfortunately, we all see accidents, fatalities, all types of incidences and situations that can stem from underage drinking. You go to court as a young adult, you get a record, it can affect your education, it can affect your career. The laws are in place for a reason, and it's to protect ourselves and our society in general. Going back to this mission statement, I think it's very significant that it says, "We're here to build a stronger and healthier Calhoun Parish." And we hope with our involvement and everyone here today that by educating the public, we can engage the public and the community as a community, take the necessary steps to foster a better, a brighter, a stronger, a healthier, and a safer Calhoun Parish.
Thank you, Ms. Cochran. They're very informative on all of the legal issues here, and I think that it's important to stress here with this program being put in place. It's put in place in hopes that the underage drinkers and the people who are committing these laws, I mean, these crimes regarding underage drinking never end up in a courtroom situation or facing any of these problems. That's exactly what we're trying to do here with Project No. And I also want to point out before we move on, that one of our police jurors has just come here, Mr. Guy Braim, he's here with us tonight, and he is very instrumental in helping us out with Project No and other programs here at the police jury. So, I want to move on. The next panelist is someone that many of us all know. He is, he might have treated our children at some point in time. He has been a doctor with, pediatrician with the Children's Clinic of Southwest Louisiana for about 30 years now, and he is Dr. Bruce Thompson.
Thank you, Jason. I just wanted to open by saying, I think a lot of us know what happens when teenagers, as well as adults, drink. I mean, there are a lot of fatal accidents, emergency room visits, sexual assault with unplanned pregnancies, violence with fighting, and even suicide. Probably less obvious to a lot of people is some of the medical effects of it. And I think we've, through various studies, we've become aware of the fact that our brains continue to develop even into the mid-20s, and drinking can have an effect on two particular areas of the brain. One of those areas is what's called the prefrontal cortex, which is in the frontal part of your brain, and it's responsible for good judgment, planning, decision-making, and impulse control. And it can have, if you do drink, you can have long-term and irreversible consequences that do affect your personality and behavior as you are getting older. So there are consequences from drinking that are long-term and may not be obvious at the time of your drinking or even the first few years, but certainly long-term they can be. So that's one area. The other area that can be affected is what's called the hippocampus. It's more in the central part of your brain, but it's involved in learning and memory. And those drinking more and for longer periods of time, studies have shown that they have a smaller hippocampus that leads to impaired learning and memory as they are aging also. So, so both of these areas can be affected and in turn cause social problems as you're getting older, poor judgment, getting into trouble more, doing poorly in school for the school-age kids, and failure to achieve your long-term goals. So again, it's more subtle and things people probably don't realize or think about in the moment, but certainly long-term, it can have quite a profound effect on people as they're getting older. There also is a genetic component. It has been proven that alcoholics, their children exponentially have a greater chance of becoming alcoholics themselves. So that in itself, I think, puts kids at risk for those that are exposed to alcohol, or their parents or even siblings may expose them to alcohol at a young age. And it's also been shown that children of alcoholic abusers are at increased risk for a lot of behavioral and medical problems, including delinquent behavior, learning disorders, attention deficit disorder, psychosomatic complaints, and then just drinking and alcoholic problems as well as they get to be adults. As far as some of the more direct effects that you can see from when you do drink, again, some people are aware of these things, but the most profound consequence would be, alcohol is a central nervous system sedative, so it can lead to coma and even respiratory failure for those adolescents that binge drink. It can cause hypoglycemia, which is low blood sugar. It can cause hypothermia, which is low body temperature. It can cause gastritis. It can cause liver disease as you're getting older. It can cause sleep disturbances, bulimia, and even schizophrenia or psychiatric disorders. So certainly, the effects of alcohol are, can be very direct, but they can also be very long-term. So obviously, it's something that we need to combat in an early age so that those effects are not felt as they're getting older. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. It's interesting, your information, it's not necessarily a short-term situation. Over time, you may not realize it, but it's something that could have a very long-term effect, underage drinking. To talk about a little bit of underage drinking and how accessible it is to, for a youth to obtain alcohol, we have someone who is a police jury employee here, an assist, Mary Kay, with the Project No program. She does a wonderful job in assisting with all the aspects of the program, and her name is Ashley Thibodeau. Ms. Thibodeau?
Thank you. I wanted to explain how easy it is for teens to have the accessibility of alcohol. I know children, you know, kids that have unlimited access to as much alcohol as they want. It is given by parents, siblings, friends that are old enough to buy alcohol. It is bought in bars by 21 or older, given in bathrooms to underage drinkers who have wristbands on their arms, big marks on their hands. I was actually at a nightclub when it happened, and it was given in a bathroom, and I had marks on my hands, and so did she. So it is seen by bartenders and bouncers, and I just think that they need to come forth with and watch, you know, the 21 and older that buy the alcohol, watch what they do with it, watch where they go. I know you can't watch everyone, but, and I wanted to talk about, I had a cousin who was killed in an accident as a result of underage drinking. She was 18 years of age, she had just graduated, she was never able to attend college. She lost her career, her social living, she had a great attitude, and that's no longer there. She was a driver with two friends in her vehicle.
You want to, okay. You know, obviously, these stories are obviously very personal. You know, there are so many occasions where Project No and the program, a lot of people just look and regard this issue as someone just being caught in trouble for drinking at home, but obviously, there are some devastating results that can take place, and we sure do appreciate you talking and sharing this with us, Ashley. Our final panelist is an actual parent, is going to also share a personal story with us. Her name is Ms. Teresa George.
Hi. I just want to let everyone know that my son was Justin Piku. He was 20 years old, and like Ashley said, as a parent, I didn't deny the fact that Justin would drink. I didn't encourage it, I didn't purchase it for him, and I tried to avoid him having it, but it was ready and available. So parents, retailers, I'm not sure who you are and what your position is or why you came here tonight, but this picture of Justin, that was at 3:00 a.m. the night that he was killed. He ran off the road, he overturned, and he did have alcohol. He was four miles from home. And it shows, I mean, I don't know if you can see it, but he had a wristband on and he had a beer in his hand at the same time. It's like, where was the employees at? Did they not see that he was a minor, or did they not care? The summer before Justin's accident, I was always the parent that was known to call. I called, and I called, and I called. "Mom, please stop calling. I'm okay," you know? "No one else's parents call like you. Why do you call so much?" And I would always routinely check his truck for alcohol or whatever, and one day, I looked in his truck and I saw that he had a six-pack or whatever, and it was bottles. I know that it was bottles of beer like he was drinking. And I actually got the receipt, and I called the retail store where it was purchased at, and I asked to speak to management. I told him, Justin, at the time, he was 19 years old. I said, "He's only 19. He purchased it from your store. I'm not sure what clerk." I gave him the time. If I'm not mistaken, it was like 3:08 in the afternoon he purchased it. And it's like, did they not ID him? You know? And I told the guy, I said, "I'm not going to do anything about this. I said, "But I just want to let you know, from a mother's standpoint, I don't approve, and it is against the law." And like Ashley said, Justin, she knew Justin personally. Justin went to school with her. He was a very good athlete. He has so much life to live. And I don't think that night, whenever he left there, that he thought for once that that would be his last night driving home. And it is real, and it is a problem, and if we don't get control, it's never going to, it's never going to end. I know that it will probably never end, but if I can be here as a testimony to save one person, to save one child, to know that it will happen, you know, it might not happen to them, but it might happen to someone else that they know or they love, and definitely the parents. The parents will regret it if they're blind. And don't think that they can't get it, because they can. They can, you can purchase alcohol at the time. And like I said before, what is the point of having a wristband if it's not going to be enforced? I just hope and pray to God that someone, that someone will do something about it, because this was a local, this was a local nightclub that this was taken at, and this was his friend, and why his friend snapped this picture right before he left. He took this with his iPhone. And I mean, Justin doesn't look frightened. I mean, to me, he doesn't even, I don't know. I mean, little did he know that that would be his last night driving home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Thank you for sharing that very personal story with us. It hits home in so many more ways than just, you know, the legal aspects and the enforcement aspects, if you find. That concludes the panelist talk. What we'd like to know, if anybody in the public has any questions, if you could please come up to the podium right here and ask a question. We've got a good team of experts and knowledgeable people that can help you answer and give information if you'd like.
Hi, I'm Barbara Dortez, and I've got a mad chapter started in southwest Louisiana, and, you know, we're just having a slow start right now, but I will get the message out to everyone. And Teresa, if you'd like to be involved, Ashley, you know, anyone, we need as many volunteers as we possibly can get, you know, to help us in this driving drunk and underage drinkers. So, you know, I'll be sending out information. I'm a very novice person with the computer, so I'm just getting started with it, and so I'll be giving out information. I wanted to ask you, James, whenever you go to find the other underage drinkers at the homes, what consequences do they have to answer to, or are they arrested, or what happens when you- happens when you find parents who are allowing their children to drink at a party, underage?
Well, if we can prove that somebody has provided alcohol to a juvenile, or I'm sorry, someone underage, then we have cited some, some, if it's questionable that we could prove it, then we haven't. We still feel like we were getting the message across with our presence with doing the field interview cards, them knowing that they are in our database and the details of what we've dealt with. But sometimes, it's a hard incident, it's a hard situation for us to prove that they have provided the underage person with it, and that they had knowledge that they were drinking. Now, our opinions are sometimes a little different than what we can actually prove, and of course, we are required to go with the facts.
Yeah, so it's more like a warning that they have.
We have done that, we have done some warnings. I would say that not every underage person that we have come into contact with, that we have cited, we have sometimes chosen to call parents, and depending on the, like I said earlier, we've been received very well by parents, depending on the, how we feel like the underage person is taking it, if they're taking it serious, and how the parent responds to it, then we do give our deputies discretion. You know, we don't require them to cite everybody. We, you know, the day we take discretion away from them is a day that we're all gonna lose. We want, what we want is the best way to prevent something like what's happening to other people to happen. And if we feel like, if the deputy feels like citing them is the best way, then that's what they're doing. And if they feel like that the parent, we've actually, to tell you, a quick story, is we had one incident that we ended up calling five or six parents, and one of the parents showed up there. We had to physically restrain the parent from doing something to the child, and we felt like the, we felt like the child was probably gonna get punished. You know, and we've also had, and it wasn't as bad as I'm embellishing a little bit, but they took it very seriously, is my point. And we've had, and we've had some that have showed up and were more upset with us than they were with the child. Well, of course, we felt like that they would be, need to be dealt with through the criminal justice system, and then we would cite them. So we're doing different things, and every situation is different, so we're not handling every situation the same.
Yep. Now, I want to also tell the story about my grandson was killed by a drunk driver. Ryan Visino, October 20th of '07, he was at an LSU game, just walking across the street, you know, with a couple of friends, and run down by a drunk driver. His alcohol level was way higher than it should have been. So, you know, that prompted me to get involved and to see what kind of, what can be done. We need to stop this. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your questions and your comments, and, you know, your comments are, hit the point and emphasize the point that it's not just, you know, the program here that it takes to have a successful outcome, it takes, as Ms. Cochran said, a community. And with the MAD chapter and others, it's really going to be helpful. I wanted to mention, Mary Kay, if you could speak real quickly on the coalition, because I know that we have many coalition members out, and just talk about how many members there are and how it's a community effort.
We have about 24 members of our coalition. We have some here, if you please stand up, we have a few that are here, I know, from all walks, from the school board, from the Office of Addictive Disorders, from the Office of Juvenile Justice Services, Office of Public Health, media, Fox Media. So we have, and we have a lot of Sheriff's Office, we have all the agencies, municipal agencies, as well as our parish agencies involved in the coalition. And they, you know, they really help in get the word, to get the word out about underage drinking, and what a problem it is, and like Jason said, and like Stephanie said, it does take a village to raise a child, and it takes everybody to be vigilant about where your children are, what they're doing, and what other parents think about, you know, find out what they think about, what their rules are before you.
Thank you, Mary Kay. I've seen that Mr. Boland, who is our Director of the Office of Juvenile Justice Services, has a comment to make. Mr. Boland?
The comment would be, as in most coalitions, I can say this one has made a tremendous impact. But I think in most things, people are concerned, as we all know, if you don't know, Project No is a grant, it's federal fund. So what happens? We drive, and we drive, and we get the word out, and we put the long hours in from everybody in the coalition. What happens when, you know, the grant runs out? I just want to let everyone know that the commitment to the sustainability of Project No from our agency is there. We're currently working on funding sources, because we're not gonna stop, there'll be no no to Project No when it comes to stopping. So you have our commitment that we will continue to look for funds to continue the good work that's going on. I just want to make sure everyone understood that.
I have a comment, Dane, on that. When we first, when Mary Kay first came and met with us, and it appeared like a lot of money, and it's a lot of money, but we quickly learned that, at first, we didn't, this be, I don't know if we could spend this, you know, well, we can, because to make the kind of impact that we have, it is taking, it is taking a lot of money to do that. We have, you know, we're staying within, of course, our guidelines, but we have a lot of, we're putting a lot of hours into this, and that's what it's going to take. You can't put one or two people out there a couple nights a week and make an impact. We're running, we're running details with 10, 11 people at a time several nights a week, and I think because of the amount of people that we have deployed and the amount of resources that we're using is a big reason why the impact is being made, because we are, and I quote one of, one of my son's friends, I have a teenage son, "We are everywhere." So that, and that's a good thing. So yes, it's definitely taking a lot of money.
Yes, and that's gonna be what we're gonna come up against, but again, the commitment is there. We're already looking at different funding streams, because we do want this to continue, because we know it's not the impact, and I think you kind of commented, James, earlier, is it the citation itself, which could be uncertain, but it's the education, and the family who is throwing that party, and four or five sheriff units drive up to that house. Citation or not, I don't think you'll have those parents doing the parties again, the party patrol, so I think the impact and the education to the citizens of Calhoun Parish is what's really hitting home right now, and we appreciate all the hard work.
Right, and I want to thank James as well, because when they go to a party, they also talk to the parents about why, why it's wrong, and what's going on, and why they shouldn't be giving their children alcohol, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Boland and Ms. Alamont. I think we have another question or comment.
There's a comment. Mike Kudla, for many years, I practiced obstetrics and gynecology here, and I think Dr. Thompson brought out the effects of alcohol on the developing brain, on the teenager and things. I would tell you that the effects are magnified many, many times on the fetus's brain. Some of these girls, I treated these girls, and we have a number of deliveries of girls in this parish who are less than 21, married or not, they're, sometimes they get pregnant only because that they were around drinking. We do have some intriguing evidence that shows that the effect of alcohol on a man's sperm is detrimental to the developing fetus, so we can tell boys not to drink and have intercourse. I appreciate all that you're doing and appreciate the stories, but women are getting pregnant sometimes because they're drinking, because the guy's drinking, sexual assault or not. They also binge drink once they're pregnant, and the effects on the baby is tremendous for that. It has a lot of problems with behavior disorders, fetal malformations, and other kind of things. So appreciate the work that you're doing and continuing, if we can help any, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kudla. Ms. Cochran?
I think with everyone's comments, it shows that whether it's law enforcement going out there, whether they ticket them or not, if they ticket them, comes to our office, whether or not we prosecute, whether we don't, we are here to force the law. But again, I think everyone's comments today shows that this is a personal investment by everyone here in Calhoun Parish, whether you're a juvenile yourself, a parent, or just an adult. It affects everybody, and as law enforcement and prosecution, we can do our role, and we will do what we have to do, but it won't make a difference unless we have everyone else joining in in that commitment.
Right, it is expensive. It's expensive to our, to the health, it's expensive to the, our parish, and to the health of our kids. So, yeah, it's expensive financially, but what's more, yeah, what's at stake here? It's our youth, our future, the future of this parish, so.
Dr. Thompson?
I was gonna follow up with what Dr. Kudla had said, that, you know, what he was referring to, of course, is fetal alcohol syndrome, which we see quite a bit of, and you don't always have knowledge, and the mothers don't always come forward with the fact that they drank while they were pregnant, but it is a well-known syndrome in children. And not only that, alcohol, but I'm just, every week shocked when you go to the nursery and you see a newborn, and you look at the mother's sheet, and she, they come in and they test them for drugs, and they're positive for one or more drugs. It's just amazing to me that there is that much going on when these pregnant women come in and they've been on drugs, you know, and they're delivering. So you can imagine what they did nine months prior to that, and then you can also imagine that if they did it while they're pregnant, they're certainly gonna continue doing it while they, when they get home, and what type of environment that is for the child. So certainly, alcohol is a problem for the fetus, but also other drugs, both during and afterwards, is a major problem.
Thank you, Dr. We have another comment?
Yes. My name is John Clausen. I've been in law enforcement since 1964. I have worked with kids just about all of my career. I started the program at the schools for the resource officers under McElven. I've worked with the kids at a lot of the high schools, I've worked with the principals. We have addressed problems with kids, how they sneak the alcohol into school, there's certain, so many different ways. I could probably sit here and tell you for hours how many times that they can, and how many ways they can sneak alcohol into school. How they sneak them into the dances. You wouldn't believe the technology that kids have, in fact, probably better than parents have. But parents have to be aware that their kids are drinking, and it's simple, just stay up and wait till they come home. You can tell when they walk in the house. I have raised three kids, I was there when they come home, and if they didn't come home on time, I went and found them. That's what you gotta do. Parents have gotta be strong. That's the only way to conquer the problem. But there's another problem that we have first, that I want to ask Stephanie, is Louisiana District Attorney Association will support a bill to take the loophole out of the alcohol going into bars, where kids go in between the ages of 18 and 21. We got to stop that loophole up and get rid of it, because when you bring kids in at 18, now, that's just like putting a wolf in a sheep's pen and tell him not to eat the sheep. Now, you, that's ridiculous. But the alcohol legislation lobbyists are the strongest lobbyists in the state, and if we don't back up to the Louisiana Sheriff's Association, the Municipal Association, law enforcement, the District Attorney Association, to back and tell the legislation, "You've got to come around and change this," said, "The longer you leave that hole open, kids are gonna walk in that barroom, you're not gonna stop them from drinking. I don't care. If you don't prosecute the people who sell the alcohol, you don't prosecute, you don't close some of these stores down that sell it, umpteen complaints that you have, and I'm sure that you keep records." I know, I know McGee, I know the sheriff's office kept records of how many times that they've had to go in and tell this guy, "You've been selling alcohol to these people." There have been a few places that have been shut down, I can name a couple of them over the last 30 years, but if we don't keep doing this, we're gonna continue having this problem. I've seen it so often, in 40 years of my career, you wouldn't believe the things that I've seen, and it's the kids that I have picked off the streets that are dead. My first traffic accident ever worked in my life, in 1965, six kids killed in an auto accident. A 16-year-old was drinking, he was driving. I had to go tell the parents, all six kids, what happened to their children. The youngest one was 14. Now, that's the hardest thing to do. I don't recommend any officer having to go to a house with a priest, or a rabbi, or a minister, and tell a parent that your child is dead. That's the things that law enforcement officers deal with every day. If it's not here, it's somewhere else. So Louisiana has got to take that loophole off and get rid of it. Shut that stuff down between the ages of 18 and 21. If you can stop that, you're gonna stop probably a good third of your kids drinking. If it doesn't, then we're gonna be, we're gonna be, that wheel just sit there and spins in the mud, not doing anywhere.
And again, just your example right there shows that this is a longstanding problem. This is just historically, this is a societal issue. We at our office are fully aware of what you call is the loophole, that is something we've discussed as a coalition. We've discussed what remedies can be taken, what steps we can take. That is something we are looking into.
We have put our heads in the sand for so long when it comes to juvenile drinking. This state is a party state. It always has been a party state. We work hard, the French people, custom is, you work hard for five to six days, and then you drink the other day. You party. That's a hard tradition to shut down. The society here in this state is the hardest, it's hard to convict a person for third defense DWI, because the 12 people on the jury are gonna sit there and say, "Well, you know, I remember when I had a drink, and I was driving, well, I could have been in the same shoe this person in." It's hard to convict someone for third defense when it comes to a jury. Not as hard with it in front of a judge, but it's sure even hard with 12 people sitting on a jury to convict DWI, especially third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh. We've got people that have been seven times been charged with DWI, and still got a driver's license. Now you tell me, so where's the breakdown?
Well, we can only enforce the laws as they're written, but we are aware, like you said, of that significant loophole, I mean, it is, you know, it's a, you're putting them out there in the middle of all this alcohol, and we know the consequence.
There are, there are new statutes that they're working on at this time in legislation, and I hope that some of them go through it, go through, and I hope that the DWIs will get a little bit stronger on the punishment. And that's where we have to go, is strictly, is setting examples with these punishments when it comes to kids. Kids like monkeys. They see, and they do. If they see someone that's doing it, they're gonna do it. Parents set examples, kids are gonna follow the example of parents. Parents drink, the kids are gonna drink. Parents buy the liquor for them, they're gonna drink, whether they're there or not, they're gonna drink. It's been in our society for, I know when I was in high school, that was the thing, first thing we did. When we got 15 years old, we're gonna find a place where we can buy liquor. So it hasn't changed, but it has created because society, population has built up. It's not like it was 50 years ago. Our standard of living has changed drastically. I was raised in a conservative period of life, now we're in a more of a liberal period of life. So we have accepted certain things, and we've accepted, and a lot of parents accept their kids drinking at 18, not realizing that they can't handle it. I've seen too many kids that can't handle alcohol at 18. Some of them can't even handle it at 30. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. I appreciate all your information. Boss, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Boss. You have a wonderful piece of information, and also your personal stories of when you were deputy, so I appreciate that. Did you want to add something, Mary?
I think I wanted, James, to let people know.
First thing, I want to clear something up about what I said earlier, when it comes to discretion. When it comes to drinking and driving, we have zero tolerance on that, and that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about possession, if we're at a party, our deputies use, have the right to use discretion. We have zero tolerance when it comes to drinking and driving at any age. And I would like to give a few numbers that I didn't give earlier. We're also, part of this is, we are also doing compliance checks to stores, and we're doing DWI checkpoints, and I'd like to give the numbers on that. Our compliance checks, we have checked 1,262 stores so far. 135 summonses has been issued to stores that are selling to underage. What we are finding is that if I go to buy alcohol, I'm getting IDed, and I'm almost 40 years old. Stores are really, stores are really taking note of this, they are taking 135 summonses has been issued to, to stores that are selling to underage. What we are finding is that if I go to buy alcohol, I'm, I'm getting IDed. And I'm almost 40 years old. Stores are really, stores are really taking note of this. They are taking this very serious. And we're going out now and we're almost writing none. Everybody seems to be, we're getting some here and there. At first, we felt, you know, it was definitely something that, and we've always done compliance checks, but never to this magnitude, never to where we were doing 12 a night or we would hit a store one night, hit them again the next night. We weren't doing that. And now that we're, now that we're doing that and we have the funds to do that, it's made, it's made a big difference. As far as our DWI checkpoints, we have always done DWI checkpoints. We've done probably, we were doing between six and 10 a year. Now we're doing five a month. And that is a bigger, we are, now, our numbers aren't showing through the DWI checkpoints that we're not getting a lot of juveniles, but we're still making a lot of arrests. We're, we're doing, you know, we're not just, if you're not a juvenile, just because that's what we're targeting. And we're putting the checkpoints in the locations where we feel like it's targeting underage, underage drinking, whether we have a school event going on, proms, we're looking at all that to where we're, we're, we're trying to pinpoint. We're just not going out and, and shooting the dark. We're, we're trying to be in the right area. We're not getting a lot of underage drinkers, but we are making a lot of DWI arrests. I'll give you the numbers real quick on the checkpoints. So far in the, under this grant, in the three months, we have done 12 checkpoints. We have come into kind of, listen to this number, we have come into contact with 10,771 vehicles in these checkpoints. And why we like checkpoints so much is when you go out, as opposed to just going out and patrolling and, and looking for drinker, people drinking and driving, why we like checkpoints so much is you, you affect so many people. If you drive through a checkpoint and you're not drinking, it still affects you. And it still makes you, you may be planning on drinking and driving another night and that deters you from that. And you're gonna, people, people just drive through it, like I said, you know, 95% of the people that are driving through are, are even more than that, are not, hadn't had anything to drink. But they're still affected by it. We're still, we're still making an impact that way. And that's why we like checkpoints so much. But I just wanted, I wanted to clear that up. And I know you wanted me to, to mention about the amount of alcohol. A couple of the parties that we have gone to, the amount of alcohol there was, was really very alarming. Hard liquor, fifths of, of hard liquor, a couple of half gallons of, of hard liquor and a lot of beer and wine, too. It's, it's a very alarming sum of them.
Yeah, right. They're not going out and having a beer and seeing what it tastes like. They're drinking fifths of, they're drinking fifths of whiskey, hard liquor. They're out there to party. They part, they're partying hard. And if I can give, as far as the retail, you were talking about retail. In 2008, I think they did about 200, approximately 250 compliance checks. And you can, by the numbers, we just, we've already done 1,200 since January 29th. So that's, that's a huge impact, I think. And they are aware now. They're aware that they have to check IDs, they have to ID. So I think that we are making a really big impact on, especially the retail.
Thank you, Mary Kay and Commander McGee. You know, these numbers are proving that this, this program is definitely in the community. It's, it's working. It's, it's very effective. It's a, a, a good thing to know that there's going to be a sustainability factor here for hopefully years to come in this program. I personally had the opportunity to, to go on a ride along earlier this year on the party, with the party patrol. And Commander McGee is totally accurate with some of the things that you would see. And I just remember seeing a, a big green garbage can that you bring out to the end of the road that was filled almost to the top with beer cans because they were playing beer pong. And it was just amazing. And these were high school students. And I think what all of these, these panelists are saying here tonight, the information they're giving you is something that we, we hope that you will take and, and help spread this message and education into the community. If you think that you don't fit this criteria of if you don't have a teenage son or daughter that may not be affected by this program, you're inaccurate on this. You know, I, I personally, when I started assisting Mary Kay, I thought that. I thought that I don't have, I have two daughters, but they're, they're teenagers, they're not teenagers, they're nine and six. And I was shocked to find out that the average age for someone taking their first bit of alcohol here in Calquash Parish is 11. And my daughter is two years away from that. So it's never too early. And if you don't have a son or daughter in this situation, you probably know someone who does. And this is what everyone's here tonight to talk about. Spread this message and help change this community for the better. So I want to thank you all for being here tonight and thank the Office of Juvenile Justice Services who helped put this on and the state of Louisiana who is helping to pay for this grant. And you can go to our, our website, which is the Project No website at projectknowitall.com. Or you can access it through the Calquash Parish Police Jury's website. And I want to thank you all and all the panelists for being here and have a wonderful and safe evening.